Today we are now in public hearings, delegations, and I'd like to ask Ted Gill to approach the podium to speak to his submission on rapid transit planning in Hamilton. And I think we have some material on that also. Mr. Gill? Thank you. Good morning.
Are we on now? Yes. Okay. Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the General Issues Committee for allowing me to be here this morning and present to you. And I'd like to say hi to my former colleagues at the Region of Hamilton Wentworth and City of Hamilton. I admit to being a little bit nervous because I haven't made a presentation to council for some time, but I felt compelled to be here today. Thank you. I would like to start off by declaring an interest in that I'm a former employee of the Region of Hamilton Wentworth, and I have been a member of the consulting team that worked on some of the previous phases of the rapid transit feasibility studies back six or seven years ago with the project manager Dale Turvey, the former Commissioner of Transportation for the region. My presentation is a fairly brief PowerPoint, and it refers to a more fulsome submission that was submitted to the clerk and that is part of your agenda. And that full submission for the folks who are watching this feed is available on the city website in the Agendas and Minutes section of the city website for the General Issues Committee for today's date, May 7. So the main point that I want to make today is that Hamilton needs to get on with implementing a rapid transit system, but is LRT necessarily the right technology for Hamilton? And my request is that council direct staff to reevaluate BRT for use as an interim and/or permanent rapid transit technology in parallel with all existing efforts to obtain funding for light rail transit and report back to the appropriate committees at the earliest opportunity. I do believe it is important to keep senior levels of government, keep their feet to the fire in terms of getting funding for rapid transit in Hamilton, because I think they owe it to the citizens of Hamilton to do so. So why reevaluate BRT? Well, BRT technology has effectively been off the table in the studies since 2008. The economic, financial, and technical climates have changed since then, and the belief that LRT would generate more economic benefit than BRT, more than LRT, to attract new ridership should be challenged. Reports to council have noted that it's not believed that a bus rapid transit system would have the same potential for economic prosperity, and it is generally accepted that LRT has greater impact on investment decisions. But the research, in my view, is not that conclusive. LRT may not necessarily result in greater economic benefit than BRT in Hamilton, all other things being equal, and I think that's an extremely important phrase: station locations, dedicated lanes, traffic signal priority for RT vehicles, high-quality urban design and streetscaping, modern, efficient vehicles, and a proof-of-payment fare system, or something similar that allows people to get on and off very quickly through multiple doors. Now, I've referenced a number of reports in my full submission where they have looked at comparable LRT and BRT systems, and certainly there was an extensive study done in 2010 for Metrolinks on the benefits case for the Hamilton system. And I think it's instructive to know that notwithstanding that there was a great deal of research done in that benefits case in 2010, they looked at well over 100 systems comparables elsewhere for LRT and BRT. They looked at systems that were either being built or were in place for all intents and purposes, and obviously the metrics and the situations of places where you have LRT can be different than BRT. And the end result in the benefits case was that LRT was considered to have more impact because, for example, around BRT stations, they assumed that the economic uplift would be 400 meters and for LRT stations 500 meters. It assumed that LRT vehicles would travel more quickly in the mid-30s in terms of kilometers per hour versus a bus rapid transit at 25 kilometers per hour. And it also assumed that the number of private vehicles that could be taken off the road with the systems would be far higher with LRT. I think we need to find out if, in fact, there are those differences in Hamilton, because what I'm suggesting is that the system should be essentially the same in Hamilton with all those things that I talked about earlier in terms of stations and so on. I think it would be very instructive for the city to undertake a comprehensive review and to convene an expert panel or focus group to address the potential attractiveness of LRT or BRT for investment and development with representation from the Hamilton area real estate and development communities. And the graphic at the bottom of this slide, of course, is the proposed station locations for the B line. Within the central area, King Street East and the downtown core, a little bit north and south on James Street, obviously there are going to be stations one way or the other, and the economic development potential in the downtown is significant. And obviously, there is a lot of area in places where there are existing parking lots and so on where the development potential is very high. Around the proposed stations for the remainder of the B line, for example, out at Main and Longwood, or down at the Delta, or at Main and Parkdale, or out at Queenston Road near East Gate Square, Nash Road, there is a certain amount of development potential there, but I really would like to see if BRT versus LRT makes any difference in the kinds of investment decisions that local businesspeople and realtors and so on would have in those areas. Like, will it really make a difference, all other things being equal? We talked about the matter of permanence, because it is really important that when you're building an RT system that it really needs to be a permanent feature and that people and investors can count on it being there for the long term. And I have had some experience working recently in York Region on their BRT project, and the infrastructure and stations are substantial, permanent, and supportive of higher-density land use. In addition, it would be possible to implement a BRT system that could be converted to LRT in the future if conditions warrant, as is happening with that system, and I know that that was included in the reviews done for the City of Hamilton as well for this system. In terms of alternate fuels and propulsion, the vehicle technology is changing, and electric, hybrid, and alternative fuel vehicles are in use and/or being tested in other jurisdictions. And the graphic at the bottom is actually a biarticulated bus from Brazil that runs on 100% biodiesel. There are a number of benefits of BRT as initial rapid transit in Hamilton: no immediate need for electrical substations, catenary wires, which are the overhead wires, or pantographs on the vehicles, which are the connections on the top of the vehicles to connect to the wires; no immediate need to remove, repair, or replace all underground infrastructure located 1.5 to 3 meters below and beside the LRT rails prior to implementation; the ability to provide more frequent service in early phases because of smaller vehicle capacities, and I do admit that's a double-edged sword, because with smaller vehicles your labor costs are higher; the potential to proceed with the A line concurrently with the B line to serve the new developments on the waterfront at Fennel West Fifth and elsewhere along the route; no immediate need to build rail connections to a maintenance facility on Wentworth Street North, that used to be an HSR bus facility, of course, or to a potential alternative site in the Tiffany Block between Barton and Stewart west of Bay; the ability to use James Mountain Road, which is the recommended route, with a grade of approximately 10.7%, instead of a new tunnel or less desirable routes for LRT such as the Claremont Access; the ability to temporarily divert rapid transit routes such as on James Street North for supercall or for road or utility replacement and maintenance. And I think it's important to talk about the flexibility in that last bullet. The flexibility implied there is not that you have the ability to willy-nilly move your routes all over the place. I think it's extremely important that the infrastructure that you build for the rapid transit system is robust and permanent. The kind of flexibility I'm talking about there is to be able to deal with instances where you can't do that in a rail-based system, whereas you can in a tire-based system. So in summary, I believe that a reevaluation of BRT as an interim and/or permanent RT technology should occur in parallel with all existing efforts to secure funding for LRT in Hamilton. The investigation of BRT should look closely at the economic, environmental, and social benefits and costs relative to LRT in the context of the current economic, political, and technical climates. Should BRT be shown to be the preferred technology, council can determine appropriate next steps in securing funding, ideally without going back to square one on the process. And I do know that the Rapid Ready Report from 2013 sets out a very ambitious program for improvements to rapid transit and regular transit in Hamilton, and is way overdue, frankly, because I think transit spending in Hamilton has been behind many other communities. So with that having been said, I'd like to thank you for your time and attention and invite any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gill. And I do have a speaker's list. I'm going to just name off the lists in order. I have Councillor Whitehead, Mayor Patina, Councillor Clark, Councillor, oh, sorry, Chad Collins, and Councillor Jackson. So I'll start with Councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ted, thank you very much. Excuse me, had to be patient, still get my voice back. Thank you very much for the presentation and invoking more thought around this whole process. I think that's healthy. What I'm clearly hearing from your presentation is, and I don't think you costed it out, so the BRT approach, when you take all those things into consideration, the underground, the rail, the storage, all those other factors, is significantly less capital outlay for the BRT versus the LRT. Is that correct?
Yes, again. Yes, that's my understanding, and I have not addressed the cost issues on purpose in my presentation, because there has been an incredible amount of work done on the various costing elements of both LRT and BRT systems in Hamilton. But clearly, the infrastructure that's required for LRT in the initial phases is more expensive.
The other piece you talk about is the uplift, and that you challenge the current thought relative to the differential between the LRT uplift and the BRT uplift. One of the things you identified was the, I think it was 400 meters versus 500 meters with LRT. Can I ask this question? Because I mean, this, I've actually sat down with an economist that's completely disconnected from the transit file, and just asked him to do an assessment on uplifts, and he indicated to me that there's so many variables when you look at those comparatives, that they're aligning their best thought processes, that he indicated it's faulty. So when you talk about 10%, 15% uplift, there's many other things. People don't just move or build in a community if there's no jobs, for example. What has happened in the communities that did reap those types of benefits? What were the other variables that came into play in those communities? What was happening at the time? Was it a downturn, an upturn in the economy? There's so many factors in regards to those variables. The question is, are we getting sold a bill of goods? Are we being given the most and the best empirical data relative to those uplifts? And you're even questioning and challenging the benefits of LRT and BRT relative to the uplifts. So could you just sort of generally comment on that?
I do think that you're right in that the technology, whether it's BRT or LRT, is really only one of the many factors that affects investment decisions and growth in a city. And I think that Hamilton has been doing, frankly, a very good job on setting the stage in terms of its planning and transit-oriented development for proper planning, frankly, to support rapid transit in Hamilton. When we talked about the uplift of the stations, again, the information from the benefits case from 2010 was looking at LRT systems where they were in place, and they appeared to have more uplift in the situations in which they were built compared to BRT. But my point is that I think that the uplift, with the support of all the other factors in terms of zoning and official plan and all those other good things that will support transit oriented development, will be essentially the same for the system, notwithstanding whether you have railed vehicles with overhead wires or whether you have BRT, which is rubber tired. My point is that the economic uplift is probably very similar, and we need to bear down and find out if that's the case.
Appreciate that. I didn't hear too much on A line, B line. Is it your position that if you take the BRT approach and you do those assessments and determine that, in fact, it is very competitive relative to those uplifts, that you can move quicker on the A line as well to, again, realize some of those benefits? Is that your position?
With the capital costs being less for BRT and the opportunities with the waterfront and other locations on the route, including the Mohawk College St. Joseph's site up in the mountain, I think that the opportunities are there to bear down on both the A line and the B line sooner than you would be able to with LRT. And I mentioned earlier one of the challenges with LRT going up the escarpment, because for the most part, for a continuous grade, it can operate on a 5% grade, and if it's more than that, which is most of the roadways crossing the escarpment in Hamilton, then you have to either build a tunnel or find a route that has that kind of grade.
Yeah, I do have a notice of motion. I think it'll be in front of my colleagues shortly. There's been a lot of discussion. The provinces, I believe, announced and committed to an all-day gold system in the lower city. We know that we have 60,000 people, believe, currently commuting outside of Hamilton to jobs elsewhere in the GTA. We also know that a lot of those vehicles are finding themselves on our highways and clogging our highways in regards to movement of goods. And we also know that creating a spine between the airport and the harbor and plugging it into the gold transit system would enhance, quite frankly, enhance and improve the uplifts on the mountain. Upper James, for example, is still under, a lot of underutilized lands, employment lands in Red Hill, the airport, Ancaster, employees transit, and create timely intersects with that spine to get north and south on that A line. Do you think it's worth taking another look at the strategy around the A line relative to the B line?
Based on everything I've seen and my experience in Hamilton, I think the B line is the more important line to start with. But if it is possible to actually undertake elements of the A line or the whole thing at the same time, then I would wholeheartedly support that.
Okay, and one of the things that has been said is that the A line is basically, B line is basically east-west, same as the gold transit system, so it's not plugging into the gold transit system, so there's a lost leader here, there's a lost opportunity, and it's really not how transit systems are built. What would you say to that?
I really don't want to comment on that. Thanks.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor, or Mayor Patina, sorry.
Thank you. Ted, welcome back, and thanks for your comments. I'm assuming that you're not anti-LRT, that you're suggesting the appropriate modality for the appropriate time in the growth of transit in Hamilton. Is that a fair comment?
That is true, yes.
Because LRT could have a place under the right circumstances?
Yes.
Despite what you're saying here?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So I'm going to quote you from our, Madam Chair, our Rapid Ready document, which appears to be the least-read document ever produced by the city, and here's what it says: "Building rapid transit requires more than simply constructing a right-of-way and running trains on it. The first key contributor to becoming rapid-ready in Hamilton is to invest in improving transit services and reconfigure the transit network in anticipation of rapid transit. Increasing transit ridership in Hamilton should be the key component of a strategy to grow the market of transit riders that would be the eventual rapid transit users. It would not be productive for Hamilton to build light rail while maintaining 30-minute headways on regular transit routes serving LRT. Perhaps more importantly, early and significant investments in base transit levels are required." So applying your thought to this, is there a sense that the BRT, because of the lower capital costs, could start to address these problems more quickly than an LRT?
Conceivably, it could, yes, but in addition to that, the Rapid Ready Report sets out all those other things that are needed to support a rapid transit system, such as the improved frequencies on routes that connect with it and so on. And I think that for that reason, the Rapid Ready Report is an extremely valuable blueprint for council to be looking at the longer term in terms of the system as a whole.
Oh, it is our blueprint, and we unanimously agreed to it, and we suggest in that report, and everything I say is quoting word for word from the report, "Investment in Hamilton's public transportation support network, bus, cycle, and pedestrian, to achieve a doubling of the existing transit ridership from the current 45 to over 80 rides per capita, as they have in Calgary and Edmonton and so on." And then there's the issue of modal split. We're around 6% now. We're hoping to achieve 12. So the issue then becomes a funding issue, and this is where the province and Metrolinks and ministers have been totally confused because of a plethora of messages that go out from all over the place, not specifically addressed by this council as direction. And the specific direction of this council is to grow the transit ridership and to understand what the funding is going to be. And if I may, and I'll leave it with this, Ted, I don't see anything in the Rapid Ready Plan that says upon some budget message from the province, "Streets will be dug up and rails will be laid." Our intention is to grow it so that it makes sense. And I think that what's very important, because even the BRT, Ted, I think, will be incremental, it will be a stage. I'm not sure that we would begin to do that upon whatever the budget message is, but I'm, am I right in thinking that you would prefer to see that BRT come sooner than later?
What I'd like to see is to convince me and many others in the community that one technology is clearly superior than the other. And it may well be that that technology could be a future technology, starting out with BRT and ultimately morphing into LRT, such as York Region is proposing. I am not absolutely wedded to BRT, but I think it has a lot of initial benefits in terms of being able to be flexible with funding and stage your construction.
And I think this is a good time to do that in view of the unfolding of the Rapid Ready Plan as it's documented in our unanimous council decision on what has been said, one of the best reports that was ever produced by our staff. Thanks very much, Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Clark.
Madam Chair, Mr. Gill, I want to thank you for coming out today. Takes a lot of courage to jump into the middle of the debate that's been going on with LRT, so I'm not sure if you're wearing a black jacket or not, but...
Not today.
Not today, good. Okay, so when I'm reading your broader document that you had sent to us prior to today, I was struck by page three where you talk about the public survey summary that was done back in October of 2008, and there were 1,900 responses. And when you read the questions, it almost seems like they're leading questions. "If you do support a rapid transit system, which mode would you prefer? Rapid bus, light rail only, either one, neither? If you support LRT, BRT, or both, what was your selection based on? Check all that apply: environmental impact, potential to attract new ridership, potential to economic benefits, sustainability, operating cost, life cycle, other vehicle cost, construction cost. Would you be in favor of implementing additional rapid transit routes in the future once the recommended results are yes or no or not and sure?" And you indicate there that it was a broad cross-section. However, it seemed to come more from their position in terms of supporting LRT than a fair and scientific survey. Is that a...
The 1,900 responses were assembled over a period of a number of months and then compiled in this report. And very clearly, there were a lot of very engaged stakeholders and interest groups and so on in Hamilton at the time, and it does reflect the views of those people who did submit the comments, most certainly. But the point that I'm making in the submission is that it wasn't a stratified random sample or anything like that in terms of trying to get a statistically valid result from the populace about the kind of answers to those questions. So I think it was certainly a very useful exercise to gauge the public opinion, but you have to recognize that there were some biases built into it.
And there was, to your knowledge, no survey across the entire city asking people to respond?
Not to my knowledge.
I was very interested in the North American Light Rail Experience, which was written in April of 2012, it's by McMaster Institute for Transportation Logistics, and you've got it on page five of your report, and it indicates "Another disappointment with the Buffalo system has been its inability to drive any sort of development or redevelopment along its alignment and revitalize declining neighborhoods. The property value impact of LRT was also found to be negligible with small increases in some station areas and a negative influence in others." So we have been told by just about everybody that is pro-LRT that if we do this, it's going to result in a mecca of development along the line in short order, and that development will ultimately pay for all of the capital costs. And yet, in Buffalo, it didn't happen. Did they do something wrong?
My recollection from the experience in Buffalo is that they were still in some population decline, and there were a lot of vacancies in their commercial-industrial fabric, and I would not want to draw a parallel between Hamilton and Buffalo. I think Hamilton is very, much better positioned in terms of population growth and economic development than Buffalo was at the time of that study.
And what does it guarantee when you go with LRT? Does it guarantee that economic uplift as folks are telling us?
Well, the point that I made at the bottom of that paragraph was LRT in and of itself is not going to drive that, because it's just one of the many factors, including your official plan and zoning policies and transit-oriented development support policies and so on and so on. And Hamilton happily is in a position where we're getting noticed by people who want to live here because of our arts communities and because of our location and the natural resources that are around here, and admittedly, the relatively short commute to Burlington, Mississauga, Toronto, and so on. So I think Hamilton is in a much better place than Buffalo was in terms of supporting rapid transit like that.
Would it also be fair to say, then, that if you look at the route that is proposed for the LRT? Thank you. There is no guarantee and no timeline for the property owners along the route to decide to redevelop their, in some areas they're all single-family homes and other areas they're not, into the larger intensified properties that would ultimately result in more property tax?
Yes, and one of the points that I made early on in my submission was that in locations where you have severely fragmented ownership, then the private sector has a lot more difficulty in assembling parcels than, for example, a municipal development corporation or something might have.
Yes.
And I do think that within the downtown area and a number of other nodes, there are larger parcels that are development-ready or shovel-ready almost, whereas there are a number of station locations where the ownership around is relatively fragmented, and it's going to take some work.
We've also got in here, it is not believed, various reports from 2008 contain phrases, "It is not believed that a bus rapid transit system would have the same potential for economic prosperity of that of a light transit system, and it's generally accepted that LRT has a greater impact on investment decisions and economic growth than BRT." Is that the case, or there is room to question those statements?
I think it speaks to my earlier points that many of these studies...
prosperity of that of a light transit system, and it's generally accepted that LRT has a greater impact on investment decisions and economic growth than BRT. Is that the case, or there is room to question those statements?
I think it speaks to my earlier points that many of these studies looked at LRT systems and BRT systems and the communities and locations and metrics that were involved in each of those systems. And my point is that if we had the same system in Hamilton, but the only thing that's different is the vehicle, I don't think we're going to see the differences in terms of the potential economic uplift as a result.
Okay. So just the last question, I have been probably hung, drawn, and quartered in a few areas of the city because I have had the temerity to suggest that perhaps we're not ready for LRT, and if we improved our transit system, improved BRTs, perhaps added more frequency on the rapid transit, that we would build up the ridership, ultimately build up more economic growth, and then be prepared to start to explore the possibility of LRT. So to use the colloquialism of some of my friends in the area, "Am I smoking something?" Or is that possible?
I think Mayor Bettina hit the nail on the head in terms of saying there is a blueprint with Rapid Ready from 2013 that really effectively covers all those things.
Thank you so much, and I agree with the mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Collins.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, and welcome Ted, welcome back. Through you, Madam Chairman, Ted. Ted, one of the dilemmas that I've had since the BRT debate started is the design aspect. And from the first meeting that we discussed it, I raised the concern from the businesses that I've consulted with in my area about the no-left turns and the access issues, the prohibitions that come with LRT. And it's ironic that those that stand to supposedly gain the most in terms of the economic uplift that comes with an enhanced transit system, they have been the most vocal and they've been certainly the largest segment of those opposing it in my area. And so I know you've been part of this discussion and certainly part of the planning process many years ago. But how do we overcome those issues where, and is that economic uplift, the double-digit percentages that people are selling this on? Because what I've heard from our transit staff is there really is no transit benefit that comes with this because we are in fact, those transit riders are getting to the downtown or they're getting to McMaster University within a minute or two of what they're experiencing now on the B-line. And so the argument's become an economic one, the economic uplift. And as I said, those businesses in my area that stand to gain the most are the most opposed to it at this point in time. Comments or thoughts on that?
It's a really delicate dance because of the timing of actually doing the improvements and then seeing the uplift. And I think that that has to be handled extremely carefully in terms of its implementation. Certainly in the experience of municipalities that are using a median busway such as I'm familiar with in York Region, the existing center turn lanes, for example, disappear through much of the section, and left turns and U-turns are allowed at the signalized intersections that are much more infrequent along the route. Does it improve, or sorry, does it affect the mobility of people to get to their destinations and so on? I'd say if you're in a car, it probably does to a degree, but the intent of the rapid transit system is to actually reduce the numbers of vehicles that are on the road so that the congestion ultimately will be either no worse or in fact even better than you might see today. So it is...
Just to stop you there though, if this is about encouraging people to get on the bus or to use transit, and the times don't improve in any shape or form. I mean, for most people, a two to three-minute improvement on the time between East Gate and either the downtown or McMaster is probably not noticeable from one trip to the next and may not be enough to encourage someone to leave their car at home and to use public transit system.
Well, certainly when you're out on the ends of the B-line, for example, East Gate Square area and around McMaster University, the travel times will probably be closer to what you might see today. But through the downtown and in the more constrained areas of the downtown of Hamilton on King and through the CBD, Central Business District, you'll see that rapid transit will provide a significant benefit in terms of the travel time compared to being in your own vehicle. And as development occurs along the B-line, you're going to find that with the increase in urban densities and so on, over time, you will find again that there's a competitive advantage of the rapid transit system in providing that service to the nodes, the transit hubs that you might find at East Gate or Nash Road or the Delta and so on along the way. As I said before, it's a delicate dance though to make sure that you don't cut off your nose to spite your face in the first instance, in terms of making sure that you accommodate those concerns and those interests as you implement the system.
I appreciate that. And I'm not, you know, as we've been through the discussion and the debate, I'm not shoving this down anyone's throat. And if the businesses in my area don't want it, then I certainly, you know, can't support it. I'm about to go through another round of consultation. I've had a lot of information in the news lately in terms of cost, but theirs has always been one of access and one of inconvenience. And I think I know what their answer is going to be because not much has changed. I did ask for alternatives. I asked our staff as part of the formal consultation and presentations that we had. The mayor mentioned the Rapid Ready, we had an all-day session there. I did raise again the whole issue about the limited access to businesses along the Queenston Corridor there. And I had the opportunity last week to meet with staff, and there really are no alternatives. You need a dedicated lane for the LRT. And there's no getting away from those left-in, left-out turn prohibitions. So that's sort of the dilemma that we're in in Ward Five. And in terms of the BRT, having experienced now what's happened with our pilot project downtown, the access issue in limited lanes, lane capacity becomes an issue again for not just motorists but for commercial operators. And I'm wondering if your vision of the BRT system is the same as the one that we have in our pilot, or is it one that seeks to, like the LRT, utilize a center lane process that would strictly dedicate that lane to a bus and there's no, again, there's turning prohibitions? I guess there are two kinds of BRTs. And my question to you would be, which one do you envision if in fact the city adopts that process?
I don't want to second-guess the design, preliminary design and so on that's been undertaken as part of the project, but what I will say is that in constrained areas such as in the downtown, the King Street Pilot, it is inevitable that you're going to have to implement something that favors transit. And whether it's a curbside or whether it's a one-lane out or something like that, it's going to affect the opportunity of private vehicles, number one, in terms of capacity on that route, and number two, in terms of being able to cross it for the purposes of turning. So I think it's an incredibly important project to be able to demonstrate the relative merits of going with a more fulsome transit system downtown by reserving space for those vehicles against having one or two occupant vehicles being disadvantaged to some point. So the bottom line is, I think it's, the King Street Pilot is definitely required to understand some of the impacts, but I think what is also critically important is to make sure that the benefits of that lane are fully understood as well in terms of the, hopefully increases in transit usage and travel times and so on on that route.
Thanks Ted. My last question, Madam Chairman, would be surrounding the construction process. And one of the questions that I recently asked our staff when I had a meeting with them was, we have, as I understand it, 70% of the design is still yet to come, we're 30% through that process. That's about a five-year process that includes expropriation if some is required, we know how long and lengthy a process that can be. It is about a five, I think I heard, to seven-year construction process to go from one end to the other. And I look at that International Village area, and I'm thinking about how, knowing how long it takes to construct this process, I heard from our staff, and they're verifying this through the consultants, that there may not just be limited or complete vehicle restrictions through that very narrow corridor in the International Village, there may be no access at all, including for those people who are walking to those businesses during the construction process. So there may not be a way to provide public access in that little area where we're constructing an LRT initiative. So I'm wondering from your knowledge of how these things work, are you aware of that kind of restriction? And is there the prospect in your mind of having those businesses for a short, medium, or long period of time not having any access to their customers and obviously their customers not having access to their front doors?
Let me answer this way. I think based on my experience in York Region with their implementation of bus rapid transit in places like Newmarket and so on, the expropriation process and acquiring property and so on doesn't affect mobility, of course, because that happens in advance. Utility relocations and so on, where your utilities would have to clear the actual physical construction for the rapid transit route elements of themselves would have to occur normally in advance. That may or may not be an issue on that section of King Street that you refer to. And then in terms of the actual construction time, depending on the technology and what kind of a system is being proposed, the actual physical time where you're in construction could be somewhere in the range of one to two years probably. Now, two years would probably for that section of roadway be on the long side, and if you had a construction contract that had an A plus B, meaning a penalty incentive-type contract, it's quite conceivable that you would be able to do something like that within one calendar year.
I'm trying to imagine a scenario in which business owners are told to put things on hold for a year or more, and then think that once that project wraps up and the street reopens, that their life is back to normal. It just, in reality, that's, I don't know how that happens.
Well, inevitably, construction projects do impact the abutting businesses and residents and so on. We've seen that throughout our careers here as well. One other thing from the York Region experience is in some of the older heritage areas of communities like Richmond Hill and so on, they actually do go from a median busway into a curbside and basically just go with the existing roadway through those blocks. Obviously, there is a downside in terms of that being able to happen without being impeded by trucks that are stopped loading or other vehicles and this and that. But again, it's a balance about the relative impact of that kind of a solution versus the exclusivity in travel time that might be necessary for a completely separate system going from East Gate to McMaster.
Great. Thanks for that Ted. I really appreciate your presentation and your passion for transportation issues and the fact that you're still contributing even in your retirement. So very much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. And Ted, enjoyed working with you when you were a bureaucrat, a director in the regional days, and thank you for your volunteer work in the community, primarily I'm aware of through the Waterfront Trust. And I love the fact, the best part of your bio is that you've lived in the Kirklandale South Neighborhood in Hamilton for 33 years. So you care about the city, and I know in your heart of hearts, you've always professionally and personally wanted the best. Just a few quick questions Ted. Thank you for your very timely presentation. Ted, could you just flip back quickly on your slides? Is that possible, please? Can you go back to, I think it's your third one, why reevaluate BRT? If you could just, so I can do this chronologically based on the way you presented your slides today. Perfect. So Ted, on this one, I have said as well over the last few years that it just seemed like BRT just fell off the table and was no longer discussed. Can I ask you in a different way, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor? Is there an image problem with our current public transit system? Because what I hear, one of the reasons I hear from strong advocates for rail is much more appealing. Tom, you're going to get the suits suddenly riding the rail and the light rail transit system versus our current bus system. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, any comment on that Ted, please?
The understanding and the belief is that if you provide a rapid transit system where it provides a competitive advantage in terms of travel times, and you provide modern, efficient, comfortable, reliable, predictable trips, that you're going to attract a much wider population than those who actually have to use transit because they don't have other In terms of the comparison of LRT versus BRT, I mean, LRT vehicles certainly are large and comfortable and so on, but my point is that the technology of BRT is such that you can accomplish essentially the same thing with a BRT vehicle as you can with an LRT vehicle, especially if you get into alternative fuel technologies such as hydrogen cell technologies or biodiesel, electric hybrids, or anything like that. I mean, I think that the opportunities are there to pursue a rapid transit system in Hamilton in a very green way, notwithstanding what the technology might be, and that you're going to attract the suits, as you called it, because the service is better than them having to beat their way through traffic and park downtown at some huge cost.
Thank you Ted for that answer, Madam Deputy Mayor. Ted, could you quickly flip over, please, to the matter of permanence and your York Region? Now, can you educate me more on York Region? It sounds like between this slide and the next one, how they've evolved? And it sounds like you've had some involvement and/or some knowledge. So could you just in a cursory way tell me, York started, it sounds like, with a BRT, high-quality, which is what you're, I think, suggesting we at least seriously consider now in Hamilton at this time, and it's evolved, it sounds like, too. Now you're telling me they will start building a VIVA new LRT. Maybe just a cursory explanation, how long this BRT was in York, how it's evolved to what you're telling me they're embarking upon. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor?
In York Region, they've established a system they call VIVA, which is their express bus route system. And that's in addition to the regular York Region Transit, YRT. And what they did for the first three or four or five years of having VIVA in place is to build fairly robust shelters that every stop and have curbside service of these VIVA buses on the main routes, the prime routes that were ultimately going to morph into the system that we're seeing being built now. Now what you see in this slide here is the median busway for the dedicated lanes that are going to be in place for the BRT because they've been operating in mixed traffic and in some cases diamond lanes up until now. So the picture in the upper left is a typical station design, for example, and it is sized and designed so that it can be used for BRT now and LRT in the future in terms of platform heights and the length of the platform. And the bottom right picture is just a semi, an oblique view of station development close to where I go into the office on occasion that shows, and admittedly, it's greenfield development, but it shows the uplift that's occurring in the vicinity of the stations as well. That station in particular operates for both directions in the median at the intersection. Now on the next slide, they're using stations that are robust and architecturally interesting. They're using colored pavement, they're using rumble strips and rolled curbs between the BRT buses and the regular traffic to try and prevent other vehicles from using those lanes. And they're using bus signal priority and traffic signals as well to be able to accomplish all that.
So Ted, are they in the midst, thank you for the history, are they in the midst of a conversion to LRT through their VIVA system as we speak? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Ted?
Not yet. They're in the process of implementing BRT on many routes. They've completed one through Newmarket on Davis Drive. There's one under construction on Highway 7 in the vicinity of Highway 404. And there's planning, sorry, there's one under construction as well through the central area of Vaughan. And there are two long projects that are being planned now on Young Street on Highway 7 and Center Street and Bathurst Street that are in the planning phases.
And York Region, to my knowledge, is about 700,000 to 800,000 people, and so it sounds like if I've interpreted correctly, they're building a case as well through their current BRT. Is that an accurate statement, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Ted?
I'm sorry, building the case for...
An LRT?
Well, they're certainly building it so it can be transformed into LRT...
If they wish to down the road.
If they wish to do so down the road.
Okay. And their population density, to my knowledge, is at least 200,000 to 300,000, I believe. I may be wrong, greater than Hamilton's. A couple of quick more questions, another... A couple of quick more questions, another slide there, Ted. Next one, alternative fuels and propulsion. Okay. I don't know if you're aware, but in a recent HSR report, to get more articulated buses, the 60-footers, we're right in the middle of a debate where HSR staff would like to get us back to buying more CNGs, compressed natural gas. You talked about cleaner diesel, hybrids, electric. I didn't hear you talk about CNG because, boy, is that ever timely as well to some $15 million we're going to be potentially spending on 18 more articulated 60-foot buses. And we're trying to decide between diesel currently and/or getting back in the CNG business. Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Ted for a comment?
Yeah, I don't wish to get into that debate other than diesel and natural gas and regular gasoline and so on are all fossil fuels. And what I was getting at in here is that there are alternative fuels that can be sourced from renewable sources as opposed to nonrenewable sources. So, for example, electric hybrid. If you were using biodiesel, for example, it's a sustainable fuel unless, of course, you're using feedstock that is food as opposed to non-food sources. And other electric, there's an electric system that's just being tested in Montreal, for example, right now, where they can go some 400 kilometers between charges. And in my main submission, I make the point that obviously there are downsides to having to step out of the system to either change battery packs or recharge and so on, or have additional vehicles to be able to put into the system as a result. But the technology is there and it can be used.
Okay. Last question, Madam Deputy Mayor. Next slide, Ted, last one. Benefits of BRT as initial rapid transit. I've brought up in the past, much to the chagrin of the pro-LRT people in town, constituent of mine, a family that regularly, annually goes to their Scottish ancestral home in Edinburgh, Scotland. And I don't know if you're familiar or not, but apparently that LRT, building of that LRT has taken something like five to seven years. The Main Street, Princess Street, all I got reported back from my constituents was, Tom, it's just one huge mess. And the mess being in terms of disruption overall to many businesses, kind of dovetailing on Councillor Collins's point, the disruption to existing businesses, and I heard if we're ever going to do an LRT here, for goodness sakes, definitely don't model it after Edinburgh. So again, that disruption comment, there's got to be more disruption in trying to build an LRT to existing businesses than putting a BRT in place. Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Ted, or is it not that simple?
I think it's probably not that simple. We'd have to look at the circumstances in Hamilton about that. But the kind of infrastructure that you have to put in includes rails and then the electrical supply infrastructure. So there is additional capital works that are required in order to implement that. I'm not saying that that would necessarily add to the time required for construction, though.
Because I'm hearing mixed reviews even about our current dedicated bus lane on King Street. Any comment from the Edinburgh in light of all your knowledge? Or is my information accurate, inaccurate from the family?
Frankly, I don't know. I haven't been there in many years.
Okay, fair enough, Ted. Thanks so much. Madam Deputy Mayor, at the appropriate time, I think this needs to stay in the hopper for further discussion and comparators. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McCarty?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks very much, Ted. And again, your work on the Waterfront Trust, appreciate that. And I think your last slide had a picture of the boat there, so thanks for your work on that as well. I was, when your letter to council came to council, city council meeting a couple of Wednesdays ago, I was the one who referred it to the GIC today because I think we needed to hear from you in more detail than the letter, fleshed out the letter. So I thank you for your presentation today. It's very informative. I agree with you in the sense that I think it'd be useful to review the development benefits, the economic benefits of LRT versus BRT. The main reason I'm supporting LRT is for the development benefits. I think that's the primary benefit. And we've got the, as you know, in the Rapid Ready Report, it refers to the Canadian Urban Institute analysis that was done earlier. And it's included in the Rapid Ready Report that makes the case of 80 to 100 new development projects along the LRT beeline corridor, 400 meters either side of the corridor is what they talk about in terms of the influence area, either side of King Street. So that's really the main reason. But if there's some question as to whether BRT has the same impact, the same development impact, I think we need to know that. So I think you're raising that question. And the motion, Madam Deputy Mayor, that I have here, a notice of motion that I have here seeks to get at that. So we'll address that later on when we get to notices of motion, because I think those are, if those questions are out there, you've raised them, and I think it's fair to say they are out there. I think we need to look again at what's in our report, the Rapid Ready Report, and the CUI report, and the work that MITL has done, McMaster Institute for Transportation Logistics, perhaps other studies that were looked at at the time Astir Greaves did the Rapid Ready Report. You know, what's out there to make that comparison? I just wanted to check in with you, Ted, on a couple of things. One of the concerns I have is our ability to move, should the province be serious about provincial funding for rapid transit. And we know before the election, they announced the $15 billion and where they thought that might come from. And that, on a per capita basis, that works out to $1.2 billion for Hamilton, if you just add the numbers for population across the GTA. So, and just yesterday by Twitter, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think a lot of us were surprised that Mr. Murray and Madam Wynn announced that 100% capital funding would be available for Hamilton, which, that's during an election, it's a Twitter announcement. It would have been nice if they would have talked to us earlier about that. So we'll stay tuned to them, but that was interesting and perhaps exciting, small E, I think, instead of a capital E, exciting. So just a concern that we've spent close to $10 million of MetroLink's money to get to the 30% design on LRT beeline King Street, and we've got ourselves in the queue across the GTA based on Mississauga, Brampton, the other municipalities that we would compete against in that sense. Any sense of a concern of us falling behind if we put BRT back on the table? Understanding the money may be there or may not be there. We don't know that today, Ted. Madam Chair?
My sense, my sense is that what we're talking about is essentially the same system, but the vehicles are different. And you just spoke of the fact that, you know, there are all sorts of irons in the fire in terms of people's efforts to try and get funding for rapid transit. I would not want to derail Hamilton's efforts, pardon the pun, to get LRT in Hamilton because we do have to continue to put the province's feet to the fire on this thing. The 30% design that you talked about earlier is not a wasted effort because, as I said, I think the system is essentially the same with the exception of the electrical substations and the overhead wires and those sorts of supports. It's really the vehicles that are going to be different, in my view. The stations, the runningways, the locations of where those runningways should be would be the same in either case, as far as I'm concerned.
That's good to know, that it's not wasted money in that sense. And it's also good to know, or to get clarified, I think, that the LRT and the BRT are very similar in the sense that they're separated. And the challenges that Councillor Collins has raised are...
Oh, just...
Just, I was intrigued when I read the Rapid Ready Report. It was presented on the operating costs. It appears that our ability to move more citizens at a lower cost is a benefit on the operating side of things. $800 million is a lot of money, no matter how you look at it. But capital, it tends to be easier to come by than our operating costs as we look to our levy budget every year. What's your sense of BRT, LRT on the operating side, Ted? Through you, Madam Chair?
As I said, I have left out a discussion of costs in my piece on purpose because I'm not as well qualified as the likes of Dunn-Hall and so on to address those issues. So I'd rather not speak to that. I think your staff are wholly capable of doing so.
Fair enough, Ted. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to clarify a comment that the mayor has made. And he's made it many times, that, and he says, I think, the Rapid Ready Report has been the most read document. I would change that, Madam Deputy Mayor, to say it's the most misread document in Hamilton. Because this keeps coming forward that we're not ready for LRT today. And figure 10 in the report on page 30 says if LRT was introduced in Hamilton today, it would perform with ridership in the mid-range of existing North American systems. So I just wanted to try, and emphasis on try, to clarify and correct that comment, which seems to come up again and again. And he makes the point that we need to also invest in local transit, which is the point made in Rapid Ready. He's right on that. And I moved a motion about eight months ago, asking staff to come forward with a 10-year local transit investment strategy, which is absolutely needed. It says right in the report, to continue to build ridership. And that whether Hamilton comes in midway or a bit ahead closer to Calgary, Edmonton, will depend on our local ridership. But it's important to remember, compared to Viva and these kind of Markham and those places, we've been building the LRT, or sorry, the beeline ridership about 30 years now. It's, the beeline bus has been in place for about three decades. So we've had the opportunity to build that ridership over that period of time compared to Viva, and those kind of folks are fairly new to transit, relatively new compared to Hamilton, certainly. And just back to the 10-year strategy, we actually took our first step this year in this year's budget. I was very excited to see the Stone Church and the Rymel investment, over $1 million year one of that 10-year strategy. So that's exciting. We're taking that step, and that's good to see. So Ted, I want to thank you, and I'm hoping that the motion, or the notice of motion that I have here speaks a little bit to what you're after today, evaluating the economic benefits of LRT and BRT using the data that we have and that we can access quickly. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Powers?
Ted, great to see you again in a parallel life that I've been living for the last two years. I've seen you a number of times in that, and you're held in very, very high respect by people in the balanced comments that you provide to them. So we much appreciate that. Just before I get a question, I'm not going to try not to prejudice my question too much by saying that I've gone offside on LRT, as I feel that we can build a fully built-out 33-kilometer BRT line from University Place in Dundas to the proposed GO station at Barton St. Tenial, and an A-line from the airport to the waterfront for about half the cost of an LRT. So for me, it's moving the people and the costs associating with it because I believe, you know, until we get the clarification otherwise and the commitment otherwise, I think we're going to have to be in for some dollars or some semblance of finding dollars to contribute to a program. So my question specifically to your recommendation is, is what you're suggesting is a reevaluation of the technologies of LRT, BRT? Councillor McCarty's alluded to, he's got a motion there, and he's talking about, the way I read it, and he may provide clarity, is kind of the comparison, but on the proposed LRT line, which is McMaster University to Eastgate Square. So could you help me clarify your ask? I believe I'm, you know, responsive and supportive of, in principle, what you're asking for. Can you just clarify what your ask, your recommendation is, please?
Essentially, my ask is that I would really, really like to know if BRT vehicles, operating on the same route with the same characteristics, all other things being equal in a rapid transit network, are the same or better or worse than LRT vehicles? That's essentially it. Because what we've seen in the research is that when they're looking at the examples of LRT systems and BRT systems elsewhere, what they're looking at is projects that are planned or underway or in place, and they reflect the communities and the metrics of those communities. Whereas they haven't really looked at, okay, what if we have the same system but different vehicles? Is there a difference as a result of that?
So just, once again, clarify, so you're comparing the technology, the rolling stock, so comparable would be on the proposed LRT line and would not at all take into consideration of expandability or other options of LRTs? I guess as the first kick of the can?
Well, I think that has to be part of the picture because of my discussion about the escarpment crossings, for example.
Correct.
With the escarpment crossing roadways, for the most part, being 6% or greater, and there aren't very many at 6%, effectively, if you're going to get LRT up the escarpment, you're going to have to be using an alternative way to get them up, whether it's a tunnel or something else.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I support the suggestion that's being proposed by Mr. Gill.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Councillor Farr?
Thank you. Madam Chair, Ted, nice to see you again. It was great working with you, albeit short-lived, on the Waterfront Trust Board in your first year. And I appreciate all of your involvement to date on this particular file. First, right off the bat, through you, Chair, I'm relieved to hear that you see promise and you see the benefit of LRT. You're not necessarily completely focused on it with what you're presenting us here today with that and what you've looked at. You know, you're thinking future. With respect to LRTs in other communities, even communities that are comparable in size, Jersey Hoboken, Portland, would you say, you know, Buffalo is referenced, and I've heard it before, would you say more often than not, it's proven to be a success? Light rail, through you.
I'd say that the experience in other municipalities has been often very positive for LRT or BRT. The key there is that you've got all the supports in terms of making it an attractive rapid transit technology. And there are certainly communities where LRT has been wildly popular and others where BRT has done that same thing. So I'm not sure that it is necessarily the technology. I think it's the system and the supports that are even more important than the technology itself.
Specific to the economic benefit, and we're hearing that today, and I'm glad, because it is more than just a shiny train, the LRT. I'm hearing and seeing in some of the work that I've done, that the business community, those people who are interested in making an investment are more confident in something that is permanent. You mentioned, even in your presentation, there's an BRT advantage, is that if supercrawl happens, we can move it out of the way. Yet, I'm hearing from the investment community, and I think the Hamilton Burlington Real Estate Association was doing an editorial today, it might have been another organization, but one that sits around that task force table with the chamber anyway, that they're more inclined to feel more confident, as the people ultimately were trying to attract to develop and enhance a sustainable lower city with this beeline, as a major aspect of LRT, that they're more confident in something that's permanent. Can you speak to that, through you, Chair?
Yeah, I think that's the conundrum because LRT clearly is more permanent than BRT in terms of the vehicles and the routes that they have to stay on. But in terms of permanence, I think that if the system is the same either way, whether it's the same for BRT or LRT in Hamilton, and you use the kind of urban design features and so on that are available to you, such as robust, permanent station designs, transit hubs that are allied with those stations, streetscaping and urban design features that make it very clear that your system is a permanent system. I think that, I want to be shown that. In fact, there either is or isn't a difference in the vehicles that are being used for that system. And I use the example of supercrawl, for example. If you had an LRT system that was running up James to the waterfront, the LRT would have to just do a short turn. In other words, they would stop at the last stop before a supercrawl and then go back and augment the rest of the system with buses. If you were operating a BRT system, you could either do that as well, or you could actually have the BRT buses divert around and then back on the route north of supercrawl. So the flexibility is there, but I don't think it necessarily suggests that it's not going to be a permanent rapid transit system.
Or we could just ask supercrawl to move it aside close to the LRT where all this great community buildup is taking place. How much to run up these hybrid renewable energy buses?
I don't have the answer to that, no. I know that, obviously, there are costs involved with any new technology, and there is a period of time, as it's being implemented more broadly, where the unit costs are higher and so on. But I really don't have any solid information on the cost at this time.
But generally speaking, Councillor McCarty's car costs a heck of a lot more than mine because he has a Prius and I have an old winter banger Subaru. So it's safe to say that right now, the technology is there. You can throw corn oil, or corn, whatever it's called, ethanol in... You can throw corn oil, or corn, whatever it's called, ethanol, and mix it with electricity and so forth, and, but the cost is the determining factor right now, and why that these, we're not seeing hybrids just in personal-use vehicles throughout. We're seeing more and more, but certainly not at the point where it's a regular feature, because of the major costs associated to operating those vehicles, and the cost of the vehicles themselves. Regardless, I'm just curious if you had the price point. So, the construction aspect that we heard talked about, so Portland, there was a real great, it started with a Twitter post that led to, I think, a lot of the community watching a 30-minute Brad Pitt documentary on Portland, and all that they have done, and all that they have achieved, achieved with their light rail work, and, you know, telling those folks along the line, because you talked about it, this delicate balance, and I really appreciate you brought it up, because I am dealing with the bus lane on a daily basis, but they were told that their, their assessment gross will grow 3% and just deal with it. And on the grand scheme of things, it actually went up 10 times, not three times. The construction piece, too, was, it was block by block. And so, I would hate to project a scenario, or paint a picture, that the disruption would be a year, I heard a year or two. That's not necessarily the case. You would maybe have construction in an area for that long, but that doesn't mean that businesses are closed on, okay, through, through you to the Chair, can you just confirm that, that? You're confirming that it's not meaning that a street is closed and the businesses would be not accessible for that amount of time?
Well, what we were talking about was the very constrained section of King Street, for example, and let's speak, for example, between Wellington and Mary.
Right.
It's entirely conceivable that you could do that section in a year, if you were, if you were really bearing down on it.
In Portland, they did it block by block, and really just closed the street for a week. Could that not be conceivable? And that was a while ago. Could that not be achieved here, through you, Chair?
That's surprising to me, that it would just be a week. I really don't know.
Of closure?
Yeah.
Disruption lasts longer, but closure. Okay, the KW do-nothing approach. Are you aware that that's one of the main arguments in Kitchener-Waterloo for going with LRT, because they measured what happens, and sold a number of fence sitters, decision-makers in that area on it doing nothing? Are you aware of that? I wonder if you could speak to that, as it...
I can't speak to the specifics, but I do know that the situation in Kitchener-Waterloo is that you're connecting urban areas of Kitchener-Waterloo and Cambridge, of course, which is the former Preston Galt, connecting the central areas of those, which are quite some distance apart, and their former communities in and of themselves. I'm not sure that the, and I use the word metrics again, all those things that bear down on decisions, are the same for Hamilton Wentworth, for, Hamilton, I mean, versus For example, they don't have an escarpment, they're dealing with pretty even grades throughout their system, as an example. So there are many other factors in terms of urban form and geography and things that come to bear on the decisions about LRT versus BRT. But to get back to my point, I think that the system, the RT system itself in Hamilton, is essentially the same for both. What we're talking about is the technology of the vehicle.
Thank you. Thanks, Ted. Good to see you again.
Councillor, Councillor Farr, listen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good to see you too, Ted. Last time, I think I saw you, we were on opposite sides of the desk, as a contractor working for the, for the region at the time. But, you know, doing my training in the private sector, I was always told by a Swiss that you, once you make up your mind on something, think it through, study property, but never sway from it, once you make up your mind, because you confuse stakeholders in the private sector, it's customers and employees. And I'm worried we're, we're heading down the road to doing that here. We went through a three-and-a-half-year exhaustive $10 million study to get a 30% design on LRT, and, and ultimately come up, and we had this debate about LRT, BRT, and we unanimously supported the Rapid Ready report, which said three things, that it's going to be light-rail transit, it's going to be 100% funding, and we, it'll be on the B-line. And it worries me if we, you know, last, two weeks ago, the Chamber of Commerce comment said, well, maybe we should be paying 15% and pass a resolution to that. You're going to confuse the province then, because they think we don't have our stuff together. Ask a resolution?
No.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. But that we may pay part of it, which sends a mixed message to the province. Now, we're going to say, well, we don't know whether it's really BRT or LRT, and I see another notice of motion that we should consider the B-line, or the A-line versus the B-line. In your vast experience, does that not mess up getting funding when you send mixed messages out? We had the premier say yesterday, they're prepared to give 100% funding for the capital. As, we, we saw a Twitter comment yesterday from the minister saying, we're prepared to give 100% capital. Why the heck do we want to change our mind, right where we're this close to getting funding for this, 100% for the province, which was our objective from the start, right when we approved the Rapid, Rapid Ready report? You know, if I was the province, they don't have their crap together, just go somewhere else till they figure out what they want. Where if we just stay very consistent, 100% funded, LRT, B-line, then, okay, now answer our question, Mr. Province, and this keeps their feet to the fire, to use your expression. Any thoughts on that?
I think it would be a mistake to back off on the request of the province to fund LRT. I think we really have to continue to go hard on trying to get the funding for that system. But as a concerned citizen, and that's why I'm here, with some knowledge, because I've been involved in the business, I didn't think we were having enough of a conversation about the vehicle technology for the Hamilton context. I don't think that that's going to necessarily send a mixed message. I think what it will do is it will provide the council and staff with the opportunity to have a good look at LRT versus BRT, because you haven't really been looking at BRT since 2008.
Well, no, we, we talked about it after 2008. We actually, someone took a road trip to Charlotte, and, and out to Calgary, and out to Portland. And the convincing argument for us at the time, why we picked LRT, was because, I think, it's the, I'm not sure who said that, Councillor Jackson, but it's sexier. So it'll attract a wider range of riders. But what convinced me was, the operating cost in all three cities was 25% of the cost of running a bus, because you're moving 300 people instead of 60 people. It runs on electricity, not diesel, which is substantially lower cost, and the insurance risk is down significantly, because it runs on a rail, on a dedicated lane, and, and so you don't have the collisions occurring when you have buses pulling in at a traffic. And, and so a 75% reduction in operating cost caught my attention, and convinced me, boy, let's stay with LRT. And that was ultimately the decision of council. So once again, I'm just terribly worried that we can't get our stuff together, we can't stay consistent in our message, and we'll confuse the funder and give them a reason to go somewhere else by switching things around. That's just my comment on it.
Yeah, that's certainly, you're right in your obligation, and I respect that.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Good comments, questions. I'm going to go now to second-time speakers that I have listed. Councillor Clark, Councillor Whitehead, Councillor McHaddy. Cook? Councillor Marula, first time, sir.
I'd like to potentially put a notice of motion that we not discuss the LRT or BRT until we have a commitment from the province on funding. It's like we're all sitting around talking about buying a Rolls-Royce, but nobody has two diamonds rubbed together. So at the end of the day, I'm, I'm just wanted to put that out there, because it's becoming a little frustrating at this point. Thank you.
Councillor Marula's putting a motion on the floor. Is consecutive? No, councillor?
That was tongue-in-cheek, but I will put it forward if it continues.
Okay, so then we're going to go ahead then with the second-time speakers, if that's appropriate. Then I have Councillor Clark, Councillor Whitehead, Councillor McHaddy.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's been any mixed messaging out of this council at all. I think the mixed messaging has been from, and I guess, are we still wanting me to ask questions here? Are you wanting quick comments and questions?
Were your questions, were you not requesting second time to ask Mr. Gill?
No, I, questions have stopped.
Okay, so are we all done? Then let me, let me just go back. Then, has everyone done then, asking questions of Mr. Gill?
No.
Okay, so we'll move to receive, Councillor Farr, Councillor Johnson. I'll, in favor, I just want to thank you, Ted, for the information, and certainly I appreciate that you didn't put dollars on the table today, because I know that can create a lot of cloud issues and confusion. So I really appreciate that, and thank you for your interest as a citizen as well.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here, too.
All in favor of receiving that? Harry? Thank you, everyone. Now we're going to go back. I now have a speaker's list. So now, if I have a speaker's list of asking staff, I'm going to go to Councillor Collins first, because he asked me way back at the beginning, and then it'll be Councillor Clark, Councillor Whitehead, Councillor McHaddy.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, and through you to staff, in terms of the, where we are with the design and the detailed design timelines, as well as the construction timelines, the concern that I've had over the last several weeks, that there've been, as certainly the election becomes a, more of a reality as time passes, a lot more discussion on the LRT project, and there've been statements that have been made in terms of, you know, shovels will be in the ground in three or four years, this project costs X amount of money. And I just want to confirm through you that, and I had this meeting just, I think, two weeks ago with staff, that we are at least five to seven years away from completing the detailed design and property acquisition process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would agree with that. Design, finish the design, construction implement, five to seven years, based on our, our research is a fair statement.
And I believe that the best guess that we have for construction process would be a five-year time horizon as well.
Given the complexity of the project, I think that that would be a fair estimate.
So we are more than a decade away from anyone cutting a ribbon on some type of rapid transit program?
Well, you can move money, you can move mountains with time and money, but on a, on a reasonable time schedule, where we respect the, the funding and the timeline, I think the five to seven years is, is realistic, Madam Chair.
And in terms of the, the cost, where we're at, I think the Rapid Ready report said in 211 that the cost at that time was 811 million, and we were looking at a 2% escalation cost per year. That was the average cost.
That's probably also a safe estimate, Madam Chair?
So based on the 2%, it's about 16 to 17 million per year, every year after 211, that we, that the system is continually either in design or under construction, we're looking at an extra 16 to 17 million dollar cost escalation.
I, I think those would be reasonable budget numbers, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I, I just want to get that out there, because there've been a lot of different numbers that have been thrown around, and I think it's important as we go through, for some people, an education process, whether it's with the business community, our residents, or others, stakeholders, including the province, we need some firm timelines and firm budget numbers in place to ensure that everyone's singing from the same song sheet. I do want to ask, and I, I want to confirm that there are no other design alternatives for the light rail trap, light rail transit system, as it relates to the no-left-turn in-or-out prohibitions that were presented several years ago as part of the first detailed design study that we received. And I want to confirm that that still exists today, before, again, I'm back to my community and asking those businesses and residents whether they are supportive of those restrictions.
Correct, Madam Chair, we've not gone back to look at other design alternatives that would resolve that concern.
Okay, thanks for that. Those are my questions.
Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the operation of the LRT, and the original agreement that was with Metrolinks, Metrolinks made it pretty clear that they would be operating the LRT, that they wanted to own and operate the runs wherever they were in the province. Has that changed?
That's not clear to me, other than what appears to be happening is they appear to be moving in a direction in Toronto, at the very least, that to design, own, and operate the LRT system.
Can you say that again?
My understanding, I'm not, I don't have that, I'm not aware of that understanding for Hamilton, but certainly I'm aware that in Toronto, the direction they appear to be moving in is to design, construct, operate, and maintain at the provincial level.
So in Toronto, the TTC is not operating the lines?
Based on my limited knowledge, that's, it appears to be the direction Metrolinks is going in right now.
And I'd encourage people to go back and look at the Metrolinks reports, because it was their understanding from the get-go, in order for them to maximize the return for themselves and for the Government of Ontario, that they would be controlling it. So let's assume they're doing the same as they're doing in Toronto with our B-line, and they operate our B-line, and our residents who are getting on the B-line now get on the B-line LRT. How does Hamilton pick up the lost revenue from running the B-line?
Madam Chair, that issue hasn't been addressed in terms of revenue. In fact, a similar case we're working on right now is revenue with respect to the provincial Presto program, and, and who, who gets what in terms of revenue when individuals cross over existing boundaries?
So, once again, we really don't know whether or not the revenue is going to stay with the...
No, we haven't had that discussion, Madam Chair.
With regards to the maintenance of the, the, the LRT line, who's responsible under the agreement with Metrolinks? The city or Metrolinks?
My understanding of the agreement, Madam Chair, is we haven't had that discussion, and that hasn't been established as yet.
I ask a question, because I heard Councillor Collins indicate that the, the prohibition of a left- and right-hand turn has been made clear from the beginning, but I also understood from the report this morning that there hasn't been a broad survey of residents or information to the residents. So do the residents and businesses that are adjacent to the route, operating their businesses, know that if this LRT goes in, there's a prohibition on left- and right-hand turns, and holding zones disappear?
Those surveys took place prior to my taking on the file, but I suspect they haven't been fully consulted on the implications on, on their businesses and the residences.
The KW line, do you know much about the KW line?
Very little, Madam Chair.
The documents on the unit are telling the public that it's a 19-kilometer, 19-kilometer LRT, and a 17-kilometer rapid transit. Seem to be getting bus rapid transit. Yes, that's what I said.
Councillors, sorry.
I appreciate the help, but I said a 19-kilometer LRT and 17-kilometer rapid transit. That's what they're getting. We're getting 13 kilometers of LRT. So I'm trying to understand how we're equating the success of the two projects when they're completely different. Why isn't it that we're not looking at rapid transit as feeder lines? Why is it that we're only looking at LRT?
I'm really not equipped to comment on the Kitchener-Waterloo experience, other than...
Okay, let me go to our Rapid Ready report.
Councillor, Councillor, hang on. Mr. Davis, did you have any?
I just follow up through the Chair. You know, the, the B-line was the, the emphasis of the study that we did. We didn't look at the hybrid models. We, we went strictly with East Gate to Mac. That was the, the study area, not the feeder lines.
And, and sorry, Madam Chair, now to pick up on Jerry's comments, our feeder lines, as contemplated in the 30% design, would be a re-allocation, redistribution of the existing transit lines.
Oh, when I read the, the Rapid Ready Transit Report that we put forward, it talks about preparing for LRT. Are we ready for LRT now?
No, Madam Chair. In terms of service design, we would need three to five years of redesign of the existing transit network to prepare for integrating with the LRT.
Actually, it is what the report said. Perhaps some people should read it. The report talks that we need to prepare for LRT, and it talks about... I'm just going to ignore them, because they're going to keep talking anyway.
Councillor, I apologize, and I, you know, I'm going to have to start asking that we have order in here, because it's very difficult to hear a conversation. I'm seeing staff are having some issues in understanding what's being discussed and what's being put on the floor, so please, I understand that, and I respect that, but let's try and have some decorum here. Thank you. Councillor Clark.
Thank you. So, listening very carefully, and, and this is what's been frustrating on the LRT So, listening very carefully, and this is what's been frustrating on the LRT discussions out in the community, that LRT will start immediately. So when I read the Rapid Ready Report and it talks about improving transit and the connectivity of routes right across the city, so that they're getting down not only to the LRT route, but also down to GO Transit. That's a goal in the Rapid Ready Report. That's something that we're supposed to be doing.
That's correct. There's a number of initiatives we have to undertake at the local level. We'd have to disentangle, for example, all of the routes that currently flow through that corridor. There's as many as five routes flowing through that corridor as we speak. Some of that service would cease to exist and would be replaced by trains upon the implementation of LRT. Some of it would continue to operate as a subsystem to the LRT, and on top of that, all of the north-south connections would have to be re-equipped to appropriately or effectively feed the LRT. So the systemic changes we would have to make, you could presumably flip a switch and do it overnight, but I respectfully suggest it would be over a period of years, and we would incrementally get there within a timeframe, within whatever timeframe council wanted us to get there. But realistically, we're talking about some very, very complicated service changes in the local transit network, and realistically, it would take us, you know, three years or more to get there. It would be a period of successive years of changes.
Now, some of the LRT rumors we're hearing is that the LRT bus will replace all of those buses that are running along that route. That's not my read of the document. Am I misreading the document?
As I recall the document, it was, there would be a number of buses freed up, not all. There would be still a subsystem operating on the same line as the LRT, but I think I recall there's something in the order of 20 or 25 buses would either be eliminated or reallocated somewhere else in the system.
And there'd still be other buses running to pick up in between the LRT, and if the routes stop farther apart...
That's correct. There'd be feeders at both ends of the LRT, for example, in from Stony Creek and in from the far west, and feeders required as subservice to the LRT in the same way, for example, A-line is overplanted on Route 27 right now. There's no expectation that Route 27, Upper James, will be replaced as A-line grows. The expectation is those two services will be integrated over time, service hours will shift from one to the other, but the expectation is you'll continue to have an A-line rapid transit over time of the Upper James local transit network.
Okay, so let me just try to sum up, and you tell me, Don, whether or not I'm correct. So we're looking at approximately five years to implement the changes to improve our transit across the entire system, including rapid transit. It may be rapid transit, A-line, whatever the case is. We would know that once we start, in essence, peeling back the onion and looking where the routes are running. So then you'd have five to seven years of design work. They could go concurrently. They may not. Depends on the resources that the city's prepared to put into the file. If we don't have the resources, then they're not going to be concurrent. And then you have the construction actual of an LRT, which could take upwards of 10 years in total. Is that a fair statement?
Generally, I'd say yes, Madam Chair, that a number of activities could, and I expect would, occur concurrently, and it would depend on time and money. For example, the service changes to the HSR, those would take about a year of planning. And I think it would come down to, quite frankly, is a balance of disruption, in the same way that Ted Gill spoke this morning. It's what is our appetite for the level of disruption? Would we want to do it fast and get it over with, or would we want to do it incrementally? And I would suggest practically, we'd be into about a year of planning and probably two to three years of implementing so as to achieve a balance in terms of how much we upset the public in the process. Concurrently, we would be working on design and construction of a maintenance facility. Concurrently, we'd be building on the 30% design. So presuming we have unlimited resources, we'd have a number of activities all occurring at the same time. The construction timeframe, again, it would be money-driven. At one time, the LRT, it was contemplated, we'd have it up and running in five years. I guess conceivably that was possible, but you'd certainly pay, in my view, a very significant premium to expedite the conventional schedule for the design development, construction, and implementation of an LRT.
And I would agree, that has been my experience in terms of how GO Transit operates. You do it systematically or methodically in order to save money as opposed to rushing and making mistakes. Can I ask Mr. Davis a couple of questions, please, if you don't mind, Madam Chair? Just quickly about the roads and what we may or may not have to do under the roads that the LRT is going on. Do we now know? Have we assessed in any way, shape, or form what we have to do before LRT is planted on the roads?
Through the chair, the preliminary design of what would need to be done to the infrastructure was part of the 30% design. It's at a very high level, but it is, we know exactly what's under the road and the impact that putting rails down would have on that.
Okay. Now, in my community in Lower Stony Creek, when we're looking at King Street, which is going to be a year and a half project to actually get King Street fixed, the complication is not putting the road down, the complication is under the road. It's the plethora of utilities, pipes, gas lines, water lines, sewer lines, and they're candidly in a bit of a mess under there. And so it's the realigning and straightening them out to make it easier to get to them. Would we be doing the same thing along the LRT line?
Through the chair, that's exactly it. We refer to it as it looks like spaghetti under the road.
Without sauce.
The years, you know, of the infrastructure being installed, so it would all have to be addressed and removed because you would have to access, have access points if you put rail down in future years, so all of that. But all of the infrastructure would have to be realigned for utilities as well as all the city's assets.
Now, we have not assessed the time that it would take to reconstruct 13 kilometers of underground, have we?
Through the chair, so the high level is part of the 10-year overall plan. It would be, I don't know specifically the 13 kilometers, but it would be in that 10-year window to get to a state of operation.
Okay. And so back to Mr. Hall then. So I've suggested that we improve our transit, we use rapid transit, we prepare for LRT, and we do it in a methodical way. Kind of sounds what the Rapid Ready Report says. Did I miss something?
I think that that's a fair characterization, Madam Chair. Rapid Ready essentially says start at the bottom on the local network and work up. Maximize our ridership to the greatest degree we can to make us most prepared for LRT, which is the ultimate goal.
And if we increase our ridership, we actually increase our return on investment on the LRT line through the fare box and not subsidize it with empty trains.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
So it's a prudent course of action.
That's our advised course of action from staff, though, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I wish all of Hamilton was here today.
Thank you, Counselor. And as we said at the beginning of the meeting, this is webcast, and it can be pulled out, so hopefully we can encourage residents to listen in later. I'll go to Counselor Whitehead, then I have Counselor McCarty, I have Counselor Powers, and then I'll turn to Counselor Jackson if I need to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this would go to probably Don. Is there decisions that could be made by the city or the province of Ontario post the LRT report, Rapid Ready Report, that may have changed or could change our position? Have we done that assessment, or should we be doing that assessment?
No further assessment, other than what we were directed to do by council, and that was to complete the requirements with MetroLinks and submit to the province. We've done nothing further to that, Madam Chair.
The all-day GO Transit system, how many people currently commute outside of Hamilton area?
I can't say specifically, but I've seen in reports upwards of 60,000.
Okay. Now, I know the Chamber of Commerce will be really interested in this because I work with the Chamber of Commerce, and many of the industries are having real challenges with movement of goods. That's people in our community that are looking for just in time arrival of goods, and one of the things the province have identified is we're trying to get more cars off the Queen Elizabeth Highway Series. So this is about employment. Have we looked and done that kind of assessment versus the positions we've taken on the A and B lines? So, for example, if we can facilitate a huge chunk of that traffic off the Queen Elizabeth Way in the 403 and have them leave their cars at home and take the transit system, now they're hooked up to the GO Transit, now you're creating capacity for movement of goods within the southern Ontario economic development area. Has that cost-benefit analysis been looked at?
If I could rephrase your question to ensure that I have it accurate, is that have we done a business case of BRT versus LRT versus improving our interregional connections and compared one business case to the other? No, we have not.
Have we talked to the airport in regards to the synergies that might be created in regards to having an A-line from the airport to the GO Transit where people may travel from other areas to take discount services directly from our airport? So have we talked about whether there's a feed there that might advantage our airport?
Not specifically, but we do have the two services from the airport. We have the A-line, and we have the trans cab, and we're well along the construction, in the construction of the city's first park-and-ride at the Mountain Transit Centre, but no specific discussions with the airport, Madam Chair.
So I guess my concern is there's been a shift, and there's been a movement, there's been new things announced that has a play. So here's a question. I remember being in Calgary, and one of the things they said, if you have a transit system that plugs into an interprovincial system or each interregional system, that's ideal. Now we have an A-line that can do that. B-line does not. So can you help me understand the rationale on the B-line versus A-line when it's important to be able to plug into an interregional service such as GO Transit?
Well, I would, I'm of the opinion that the B-line does feed GO at the GO Hunter station. The A-line would feed the new service that's coming to the city on the, at the Leona Station on James North. I think what we've got our eye on right now is what and to what extent will GO be repositioning its bus services and its rail services, and we'll have to adapt to those changes. So we do anticipate some changes at the provincial level that the city will have to adjust to with respect to both bus and rail service, serving both the Hunter Street Station and the GO Station, as well as the new station being built out on the, just off the QEW, Madam Chair.
So we're dealing with an east-west route, and we're dealing with east-west connection with the GO Transit, and you're suggesting that the LRT would hook up directly to the east-west GO Transit system?
What it suggests is we have an existing rail station at GO Hunter, and we, to the best of our ability, provide good connectivity from the local transit system to GO, and we are going to have to adapt to the environment around us. For example, as GO changes its operations from bus to rail and reallocates its bus and rail from one location to another. So we essentially have to adapt to the external environment to benefit both the city and to help MetroLinks be successful with their goal.
And I guess my point is that the A-line could feed directly in T-Bone with the GO Transit system.
I think there could be no question. The A-line is designated rapid transit corridor in the same way B-line is. It's not at the same level of investment, but very definitely, we, and I think council has adopted this position through its nodes and corridors and through Rapid Ready, is that the desire of council is to have both the A-line and the B-line operating at full rapid transit capacity and to be integrated to the greatest extent possible interregionally with GO and with Burlington Transit and our adjacent municipalities.
The, will we agree that James Street, Upper James, is basically at that very heavy congestion, almost 24/7 now?
It has segments of extreme congestion, certainly between 20 Road and the Link is a concern for us, not so much congestion for automobile traffic, it's getting the buses up and down the escarpment, and the cost of getting the buses up and down the escarpment, but certainly that is a segment of Upper James that is an ongoing concern for us and is getting worth with respect to congestion, the section between 20 Road and the Link, Madam Chair.
And do we believe that if we created, whether it's a BRT or LRT on an A-line serving, seeing the largest population in the city is on the mountain, that we could increase the ridership by creating that spine? And back to the suits idea, a lot more suits taken in the system.
Well, again, if you get back to the blast network, as I quite agree with Ted, that the B-line is where the demand is right now, and that demand is going to continue to grow, and Counselor Jackson raised it earlier, we've got a report before committee as we speak right now in terms of replacing 40-foot buses with 60-foot buses. That's the identified corridor, it's where the greatest demand is going to be for the foreseeable future, and we're, to the greatest extent possible, adding new buses and adding larger buses, adding capacity to, again, to be Rapid Ready, and we'd like to do the same with the A-line. I have a very strong commitment to, we have very strong commitment to the A-line because of the benefit the A-line provides over and above, the connectivity between the airport, the new St. Joe's Healthcare Center, Mohawk College, the CBD, St. Joe's Hospital, all the activity in around the downtown core, the new Leona Station, and the waterfront, I'll make the A-line an ideal corridor. Over and above all of that is the A-line effectively intersects every north-east-west local transit route on the escarpment. So we can achieve a lot of return on investment by enhancing the A-line that if you consider taking the escarpment, for example, from its current 15-minute peak headway to, say, a seven-minute below the escarpment, that's tremendously more expensive than building the A-line and improving the A-line so that it now provides connectivity. So it's a lower cost, higher return investment from the perspective of growing ridership on the escarpment. We really need to get the entire escarpment from its current headway up to the same level as the ridership below the escarpment. A good initial investment, a wise investment, is to grow the A-line because it intersects with all these east-west routes on the escarpment and because of its connections to key destinations.
Have we, since the Chamber of Commerce has taken a keen interest in urbanism in downtown, we also looked at their, I know they had a committee looking at movement of goods, and it was a really serious issue for the Chamber, because I was involved in that process a number of years ago. Have we got any feedback that taking 60,000 people and plugging them directly into a GO Transit system, probably prudent relative to the concerns and issues they have now?
Not specifically, Madam Chair, but I do support the city manager's office in that respect in terms of increasing our knowledge on goods movement and having a plan in place to effectively manage the goods movement, but that's still in its infancy, Madam Chair.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarty?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I'd just like to check in on where we are in terms of our meeting today. It seems to me that we're using staff to make our respective positions ironclad in our view, in our respective counselors' views. I'm not sure that's fair to staff. I'm not sure there's a value because we need to know what happens with the provincial funding, we need to know what happens with the election. There are two motions, notices of motions on the floor today. Mine was in response to Ted's visit today, and Counselor White has one about the A-line, which I think confuses the issue as per Counselor Ferguson's comments. I'd like to suggest that we move on to other items today and to don't move ahead with these two notices of motion today. I've talked to Counselor Whitehead about this, head in the direction that Councilman Rule, I think, was having us go in to receive the information today. And it's a timing issue, right? We need to know what happens with the election, we need to know what happens with provincial funding. 100% provincial funding offered yesterday, we'll see if that comes true, but I just don't think we're going to get any further today.
Thank you, Counselor, and I appreciate, I was under the impression both motions, notices of motions are being withdrawn or held off today, and I appreciate that. I think we were at is that some counselors had wanted some clarification from staff, and I'm taking that everything that has been done so far is clarification, because we have nothing that's cut and dry yet. So I appreciate that. But in order to move the meeting forward, I appreciate it because we do have a long list of other delegations still to be heard. We are tentatively going to be trying to go in camera for two, and I know one of the delegations wants to be heard before we go in camera, so I'm trying very hard to get us through this. So if I can, I will turn to Counselor Jackson.
Madam Chair, just let me, one of the things you said, if you don't mind, just quickly. I think the challenge is we're asking for clarifications, and I could ask for a whole series of clarifications as well, and, you know, I'm going to get different answers.
series of clarifications as well, and, you know, I'm going to get different answers, because I've got the report right in front of me, the rapid-ready report, so just not sure the wisdom of doing that, but anyways.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll take that information for what it's worth. Now, Counselor Jackson, were you going to, because I have you here, I'm not sure if you're going to put this on the floor?
Yeah. Madam Deputy Mayor, I just didn't, so I don't want to muddy the waters, but I just didn't want to lose sight of the excellent presentation. I know we received it for the official minutes from Mr. Gill, and his summary, his final slide about the reevaluation of BRT while still pursuing the LRT funding. I just didn't want to lose sight of that. However, I believe Counselor McCarty in his notice of motion kind of covers that point, and he sounds like he's willing to defer that till the next meeting. So, I just didn't want to lose what I thought was a solid recommendation from Mr. Gill, at least referring it at some point in time to staff for the feasibility and consideration of it. But if Counselor McCarty is not actually withdrawing, but just keeping it deferred till another time, which kind of captures what Mr. Gill was suggesting, I'm comfortable with that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I guess part of the confusion, and, you know, I've been hearing it around the table for the past, what's it been now, two hours? The comments that were made by the premier were with regards to rapid transit. They did not specify LRT or BRT. So, in terms of the 100% funding, we don't know what it's for, other than rapid transit. But I think more importantly, we don't know what the position is of the two opposition parties that are running in this election, and that has a big concern for me. If we're hanging our hat on 100% funding, and we've continued to have two-hour discussions around this table, when in fact, after the election, we really don't know what the results are going to be or what the positions are. So, my suggestion is, and I was hoping that there would be a motion coming forward that we could tack on, that we need to find out what the position is, that a letter be sent to the leader of the NDP and the leader of the PCs, just exactly what their position is on funding rapid transit for the city of Hamilton. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, in the interest of hopefully we can move on from this?
Thank you very much. The rapid-ready report clearly identifies what we expected. The province has now three different messages, well, actually four, and it would be important for us to know where they're going, but I have to tell you, it's frustrating, because Mr. Hall could already be implementing rapid-ready. And it's not this council that's holding it up, it's the commitment from the provincial government that's holding it up. Even if they provided a portion of that money to us, we could be on our way, and we could have had improved transit and improved rapid-ready. I want our council to make a decision and start leading us forward, not keep waiting and waiting for hopefully the right answer that supports certain people. It's our city that we're trying to fix, and it's wrong that we have to wait this long from a province that made this commitment to us.
Okay, Counselors, I have had Counselor Clark as the last speaker, so we're going to close off on this item now, and I'm going to move on to the next public delegation. So, I have Keenan Loomis from the Hamilton